Thank you. I'd like to call the City Council work session on Tuesday, August 16th, 2016, to order at this time. Vanessa would like to move to roll call, please.
Councilmember Chapados?
Here.
Councilmember Kimball?
Here.
Councilmember Madfretti?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Wade?
Here.
Vice Mayor Brown?
Here.
Mayor Price?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you. At this time, we'll go to item 3.1 on the agenda. We're going to review the regular City Council meeting agenda. Counsel, any questions on this? Yes, Councilmember Smith.
So, I just have a question on 9.4 on the regular agenda.
Okay, 9.4.
Yep. I don't necessarily want to pull it. I just want to ask a question, if that's acceptable.
Absolutely.
So, when it refers to, let me get to the exact wording, that we agree that we have been, that we agree that we have financial obligation to contribute to the state, is this related to when the state recently pushed DOR cost onto the city?
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Smith, this contract is the second agreement, and this is what the state is now charging Maricopa for the collection of TPT taxes. And so, that was instituted over a year ago.
A year ago, right. So, this is that effort.
That's correct.
When I read those words, I have to tell you, it just makes me upset. Because we have to use the words "we agree that we have a statutory financial obligation," I want to change the words to "we agree that we have been forced to accept a statutory obligation."
Certainly, I'm not going to defend the state's requirement that we contribute funding for what, at one point at least, for a long period of time, was something that they did for free. But now that, as you all know, have changed.
Well, I would like to reword that just slightly, Gregory, if you don't mind. We haven't received it for free. Taxpayers have been paying the state to do the work, and the city receives the check, or the information, the data that comes from it. Taxpayers in the city of Maricopa have paid it. So, basically, there's nothing that we can do. Again, just asking the question, and I just wanted to draw attention to the fact that I hate those words because it was forced upon us. And in my mind, again, I just want to say, it sounds like a double tax, as we've talked before, because the state is getting paid, and then they pass it on to us, and the taxpayer pays again through the city. So, I guess we agree, we can't do anything. I just wanted to draw attention to it. It really bothers me. Thank you.
I agree. I think everybody up here does. Anything else on the regular City Council agenda at this time? Okay, seeing nothing. I'll take a side in 3.2. We're going to hear any reports on meetings or conferences attended by the council at this time. Anything you wish to discuss? Councilwoman Chapados.
Thanks, Mayor. On August 4th, I had the pleasure of meeting the new president at CAC, Dr. Jacqueline Elliott. She had a nice little meet and greet, and we got to meet her and hear some of her visions. On the 11th, I was fortunate enough to be able to attend the Board Committee and Commission Volunteer Luncheon that we had here at City Hall. Wanted to just thank Jennifer and staff and everybody that worked on that. That was a really nice event, and I think the volunteers appreciate it. We had some fun. And I also just wanted to make a general thank you to the residents of Maricopa. On Saturday, August 6th, Firehouse Subs did a drop off of water bottles. Their goal was to get 100 cases of water. They ended up with 280 cases, which will be distributed to our police and fire. So, I just wanted to thank Maricopa for that effort. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Wade?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. On Thursday afternoon, Congresswoman Ann-Ker Patrick visited Maricopa and did a roundtable discussion with a number of community members, and was very well received, the information that she presented, and asked her about several different issues as a Congresswoman, things that she's done. Also, later on that afternoon, the local, or the Pinau County NAACP held a meeting, community meeting, and it was the second part of, I don't know how many parts it will be, but it was the second one from one of its previous. Very well attended. It was a meeting to discuss the relationship between the African-American community and the Police Department. And, of course, we were well represented there by the Police Department, by Chief Stall was there. And I think it was general consensus, and I'm not going to speak for the rest of the community, but I think for the general consensus that most people were comfortable in the city that we live in, and I was very pleased to hear that. So, it was a good meeting, and glad the outcome was the way it was as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wade. Anyone else at this time? Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and advance to item 3.3, the Mayor and City Council's show here presentation on SmartGov, the City of Maricopa's permitting and online services portal. Martin.
I'm here. It's been...
Press that button.
I apologize. Okay, is that better? I see other people do it, and I go, oh, I'll always remember that. So, as you know, it's been a while since we have presented anything on our online portal, portal, or our SmartGov operations. We've been using it pretty heavily for about 10 months now, but really, the online portion of it has been more like six or seven months. We felt like, while there are still some issues that we're kind of working through, we felt like this is a good point in our process to bring this back to you, just so you can kind of see where we're at with it, some of the things that we have added, some of the things that we've added this year that we weren't sure we were going to get to, but we have gotten to, and we've expanded the use and been able to make some pretty good headway. I will warn you that we are, I think, the computers are fighting each other from here to the back room, so we're hoping this will not be glitchy, but I can't make any promises. So, with that, I'm going to hand it over to Robert Mathias, our Development Manager, who's going to, he knows a lot more about the system and how it works than I do, so I'm going to let him present it to you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Robert Mathias. I'm the Development Manager for the City of Maricopa. Tonight, we're going to do something that hasn't been done the City Council chambers before. We're going to try to do a live presentation while recording this and give the council an update on SmartGov. First thing that I wanted to bring up was that as of January, and I think the last time we were in the Council chambers giving you the presentation, it was back in November. But as of January, we have done exclusively electronic plan review. We haven't done a single paper plan review for, since January. We do all of our online inspections, all of our inspection requests online. When we go do an inspection, our inspectors load those inspection results on their portable laptop in the field, and then the customer gets an immediate email once they get it loaded in, real time, so they can see the results of their inspection, so they don't have to wait a day, or two days, or the end of the day. So, we're doing a lot of really cool things that we believe no other jurisdiction in the country is doing at this point. And we just wanted to show you a couple of them, because we think they're kind of interesting. We wanted to be able to give you a presentation before we give one to P&amp;Z on this, so I'm just teasing. So, the first thing we'd like to show you is the city's website, as you can see in front of you there on the screen. And what we had was, we had new access online permitting and parcel search, but what we've actually added, when you go down and say "access online city services," so if you click on "access online city services" now, you can see where it says "apply for a building permit," "pay online," or "schedule inspections" from there. You can report a code violation from here now. All code violations go through our portal, and not through eGov anymore. You can report a building code violation, and we're going to add, as we move forward, planning violations, applications, that kind of stuff. So, business licenses will be added here shortly, and that kind of stuff as well. So, all of our stuff is through our online portal. So, if we go, if we clicked on one of those, then that takes us right over to our portal, and since it was for building services, it took us right over to the building one, and we'll get right to that. But this is our homepage, and this one, this is where people can go applications. They can contact us, they can report a concern, they can do a parcel search, they can see if a project has a permit or not. We're not going to go through, we don't have time to go through each and every one of those, but customers can now access a lot of this information. One thing, nice thing, we added in parcel search is if you wanted to find your zoning, if you wanted to find if you're in the flood zone, if you wanted to find your setback requirements, you can do all of that from the portal itself. So, you can see all of the layers that we've added, and so we're constantly trying to add additional layers for our citizens to be able to access information. So, if you want to know setbacks on your property, you can get on here and actually check your setbacks, for residential setbacks. And you just pick your property, and bam, there's your residential setbacks. That's okay. So, we'll go, and now, down at the bottom, you can see where it says "advanced search," or "reports," or "documents." So, what we're doing there is we're loading, preloading reports that people can access. So, for example, the Home Builders Association, they want to know how many permits we issue each month and so, so they can actually get on here and put in a date range, and it doesn't matter what the date range is, they put a date range in there, and they can run their own reports. So, that way, we don't have to spend time and effort running those for them each month, and they can pick what date range they want. So, we're going to load a bunch of reports, and you can see where it spells this out for them, and gives them all the information that they're looking for. Real easy to use. We call this our one-touch system, so you click on one thing, and it gets right to where you want to be. So, that's the parcel search, and the contact information, and that kind of stuff. So, under "applications," for example, if, this just shows that Sida now owes $72,000 to the city, and I'm expecting to check any time.
It's in the mail.
And just wanted to mention, Sida Flores is in the back operating it, so she deserves a round of applause for putting up with my antics. But on this one, so to apply online, just want to show you how easy it is for somebody to apply on our system. And I don't know if anybody's ever been on any other government system to try and apply for a permit, but it's kind of difficult to do. So, you click that on, and you say, "where do you want to apply for it?" It's the Building Department. "What do you want to apply for?" Right? So, we have a drop-down list of everything, or you can just type in a search and find it that way as well. So, you pick out which one you want, and then you just start hitting the next button, and it asks for some very basic information. You describe your work, and go on. You start typing in an address from here, and it starts bringing up every address in the city. So, all you got to do is get to a certain point when you find your address, click that on, and then it fills everything else automatically for the customer. You say, "is this a contractor or not?" It's homeowner. You just hit "next," or you can even go in and find "meritage," because we're tied directly into the state ROC board, so they can do it that way as well. Put in a valuation of your property, and the type of construction, and then the quantity of the square footage, and just hit "next," and now you can submit your application. That's how easy it is to submit for a single-family dwelling in the city of Maricopa. Takes somebody 20 seconds, and they're done. I don't know of any other program that allows you to do it like that, so it's really cool. And then, once you do that, then it actually pulls it up on the map and shows you where you did. It gives you all of your contact information. It gives you your contractor information. This is all of the public sees, right? So, now they can see their parcel information. You can see where no files have been uploaded. So, if they want to upload their plans, they just click that button there, and it takes them right over to this. They hit the upload button, takes them right over to their files, and probably don't even have any files on there, do we? There you go. And you can pick whatever files you want. You click that, now your plans are uploaded. Now, we do your plan review. That's how easy that is. And so, it gives you all of that information. It tells you what inspections are required for a single family, what the required permits are. Tells you who your planner is, if it's a planner assigned to it, that kind of stuff. So, total transparency and total information for our customers. It's just pretty cool stuff. And that tells you you owe us 50 bucks, too. So, and if you have any problems, you can hit a contact button, and it takes you right over to contact our staff. But we can go home, Sida.
Robert, can they pay online, too, then?
Pardon me?
They can pay online, too, right?
Yeah, and so, if you go back to "application," this is where the pay online is. So, if you pay online, all you have to do is pick which one you can want. So, like, for example, DR Horton, they may have 100 of them in there, 50 of them in there. They can pick which ones they want to pay. They can pay one or multiple ones, and they pick that, and then it says, "this is the total amount. You proceed to checkout. Do online payment." And if you don't have a credit card that can handle $72,000, we also do electronic checks as well. So, they don't have to come down and give us a check. They can just do it electronically. So, it's real easy for people to pay now. So, that's, and then, if we go back to "applications" one more time, I just want to touch on something real quick. So, also, from here, you can also request your inspections, and you can, it's real easy to do that. Same, same basic thing, just basically click on what you want, and it's done, right? And then you can also check where your applications are. So, if you click that on, and you can see all of your applications, you click on one of them, and it tells you where it is, and down below, it'll tell you who has it in the city, and what status it's at. So, this way, our customers can see where it is and who's been working on it. So, we can tell exactly when it came in. So, that's the portal, in a nutshell, of what we can do now for that. So, we think it's, we're pretty excited about it. We actually gave a presentation last week to the Arizona Building Officials Organization, showing it off a little bit, and people actually came up and gave us hugs, because the one question they had when we went in, they said, "how is somebody able to do this?" Because nobody's been able to do this before, and now the question has been answered. This is how you do it. So, it's really cool. So, are there any questions on the portal that any council members have? Anything you'd like to see, or questions?
Council questions. Councilwoman Chapados.
Robert, could you show us, when you click on a parcel search, all the information that's available at the click of a button?
For, well, okay.
Well, let's say for this building, if somebody wanted to click on something and see the boundaries, or the address, or the owner.
So, we go to the portal, and we click on the imagery, yeah, imagery, and then we put a parcel information. And then, what we do is we start typing the address. So, if we go up and start typing in the address for 39700, oh, there it is. So, it pops it up, and now, it pulls up, and it says, "here's the legal description, here's the address, here's all of the information that we have on it, here's your tax code, applications, text, zoning information," just gives you all the information that the public, we can give the public, too. So, on some of these properties, it could be page after page after page. And then, if you even, so there's your final plat, final mylar, this is all of the information for this, for the City Hall, that we have record of. So, it just gives you every bit of information. At any time, the blue one, so you click on any one of those, and that takes you right into that permit. And so, it gives you specific information as far as, so this is to replace exterior, external stone veneer, for example, and then now you get all the information, contractor information. It's total transparency. It's just all there at a fingertip, at your button.
Thank you. I think this is great, and I think we owe our Development Services Department, and you specifically, a round of applause, because this is groundbreaking, and it's, everybody that we've shared with, the mayor and I, were at the ICSC in May, and we shared with them, and they, you're right, they first give you the look of, "really? Seriously?" And then, when you tell them it's all electronic, it's a, "oh, my God, that's going to save me so much time and so much money." So, thank you so much for this.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to serve the city of Maricopa. It's been a pleasure. I'm not done yet, but I mean, it's been a pleasure so far, but we'll work towards it. Now, I got another week or two, you know, so.
That's good.
Yeah, maybe, you know, but anyway. So, are there any other questions on the portal?
Yes, Councilmember Wade, and then Councilmember Smith.
Yeah. How historically accurate is the information here, and how far back does it go?
Well, we loaded this information, Councilmember Wade. We went live in June of last year, and we went back to all of the information that we had in UNIS. So, we have all of the legacy files. Now, the information's not as informative, because UNIS wasn't working very properly at that time, so basically, we got everything we could get out of it. But we, what we have is that we have all of the plans electronically, not all of them, but a lot of them, and a lot of the information. So, as we use our interns, for example, twice a year, our high school interns, we're having them input information, so that way, we can actually have some historical data to rely on. So, we're trying to build that as well.
So, could you make sure that they input site plans, and square footage, and CFO of properties as well, because it seems, from a commercial perspective, those are, that's information that we look at or look for on a regular basis, and quite often, we're not able to find that information in different municipalities.
Yeah, that was certainly one of the issues that we had, is trying to find that historical data for certificate of documents, these and stuff. I can assure you that our new system, moving forward, will never lose any of that information. We'll always have it. But trying to retrieve it is just as difficult now to put it into the system as it would have been to try and retrieve it before, but we're working on it as best we can. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
I was just curious. This is not a homegrown software. This isn't off-the-shelf software?
This is a software that the Paladin Data Systems called, it's called SmartGov. SmartGov had a system that we purchased, but what we purchased was the ability to have a totally interactive program that includes everything that we're showing you here tonight, that they didn't initially offer. So, in conjunction with them and the city of Maricopa, we're building this program, and so that's why, for example, the fees that they're charging us, they give us unlimited users for minimum two years and stuff, because we're helping them build this. So, it's a sort of a collaborative working experience that we have.
Okay. So, I think that answers my question. I was really curious, in terms of bragging rights for the city of Maricopa, if it was off-the-shelf, it sounds like it's going to be off-the-shelf, and something, yeah.
Eventually, yeah. Eventually, they will, they will, they will promote this.
Right. I was curious, what made us stand out, but it's because we're really helping them kick this off.
Yeah, they're building it to the specifications that we want to see, as far as a totally paperless and digital solution.
Very cool.
And so, once that gets constructed, and we're done, then I'm sure they will market the heck out of it, yes.
Very cool. Well, congratulations. That's really neat. Thank you.
Councilwoman Chapados.
At the beginning of the presentation, you said that in the future, we'll be doing business licenses, and I see you can sign up for a rec class. Is this eventually going to replace some of the current programs that we use in other departments and for other services? Like, you'll be able to renew a business license online, get a business license, pay for it, sign up for classes? Are there limits to this thing, or is it just based on how much we want to fund?
No, eventually, we're going to get to that, and then, what we'll show you next, Sida, if you just want to go over to the permitting, I'll get right into business licenses to answer that question. We have two aspects. One is the permitting side, and the other one is the online portal. And in order to open something on the online portal, we have to have a process that our customers can understand, that they can follow. And so, we're trying to rebuild our business license process, because I don't want to put a process on there that's onerous and difficult to use, so we're trying to rebuild it to make it easy for our customers. So, for now, we have business licenses in SmartGov. So, right now, we have 1,161 business licenses in SmartGov. So, every business license we have is in SmartGov. It's just not open on the portal for submittals yet, but we're working to get that done. So, for example, if we hit the map, so what's really nice about this program is, as I just said, we have 1,161 business licenses in the city of Maricopa. There's your 1,161 businesses. So, we can put on the, put on the imagery as well, and the parcel information, and, for example, if we were to click one on, then it tells us exactly what that business license is, tells us who the owner information is, and again, we can hit, we can hit the number, and it takes you right over to that business license. So, then we can see if there's any associations, like any citations, or penalties, or anything like that. So, it's all built in there for business licenses. We just haven't turned it on for online permitting yet, because we're not processing it there. So, so, under "associations," the nice thing about this program is that we hit "associations," and it'll bring up any related information, such as code enforcement, building permits, planning, any reoccurring inspections, like fire inspection. So, really good is for, like, commercial projects. And this, Councilmember Wade, is where you'd be able to find all of your CFOs, once we get all this stuff built. So, it's, so you can actually get your information on a building permit out of business licenses, or information on the planning and zoning from a reoccurring inspection. It's all tied together as a single unit. So...
Will this have a search capability? Let's say you're looking for a particular kind of business in the city. Can you search for, you know, professional services, beauty salon, whatever it happens to be?
Yeah, under, if we, if we went back to search licenses, now, I just want to, Martin, point out a good thing. We're in now in the actual permitting. This is not what the public sees. This is our internal, so we're actually in the permitting. So, if we were searched by, we can search by "doing business as." So, if we put in Bashes, for example, or, so, I just do that, back one. You got an A there. Oh, you got another A. There it is. Okay. And so, we just basically put it, so now, we pull up Bashes, and there's your business license for Bashes. Well, we can do it under "type of business." We can do it under "doing business as." We can search for owner information. We can search by address. We can search by a multitude of different ways at any one time. Or, we can just pull up the map and go right to that site, and click it on, and get all the information, if you want. So, it's very, very user-friendly. And again, hit the associations, and now we can see everything that they've done recently, as far as business licenses or permits and stuff. That right there is really cool, you know, but all ties everything together. So, one thing we wanted to show you is, if we go back up to "workspace," does that answer your question on business licenses? Okay. So, if we go up to "workspace," these are some charts. And you go up to the charts, Sida. I'm ready for this now. So, you can see our permit counts have gone up, and then, so we have some pretty good ones for June and July, and they've gone down a little bit. But we're actually doing pretty good so far for the middle of August. But the thing that I wanted to point out was the middle one, the average days to issue. Back in February, our average for all permits was 113 days to issue. As of August today, it's six days. That right there alone is worth the price of admission on this program. This is, this is what electronic plan review, electronic permitting, portal information to our citizens can do for a jurisdiction right here. And this information is real time, so it's coming right off of the program itself. So, that right there is pretty cool. But the workspace, what that gives you is you can build this, and the nice thing about this program is it's customizable per user. So, each user gets to build how they want their dashboard to look. So, you can pull up what charts you want, or what applications, or what user to-do list, or whatever, right? So, it's real nice. Everybody gets a chance to build it themselves. And one thing that we're going to be doing is, we're going to be setting up times for the council members who wish to get trained, because, like I said, we have unlimited view, so we're going to be able to give each council member their own access to be able to view all of this information, and train you how to look this information up. So, that way, if you happen to be wherever you are in the world, because it's totally web-based, so if you happen to have a question, or somebody brings something up, you'll be able to pull up the map and click that on, or pull up and search a permit, or search a license, and be able to look at that information up yourself, if you wish.
Amazing.
Total transparency. Another nice thing that we do is under permitting. Our permitting is something to where, if you've never issued a permit from SmartGov before, and you've never even seen the program, I'll tell you, I can get you to issue a permit in under three minutes, if you've never done it before. If you've done it before, it takes you about 20 seconds. So, if we were to, if we were to create a permit, for example, and all you do is "building safety," permit type, either type it in, "new custom family home," or whatever you want, and "parcel address," you start typing in an address. So, you pick which one you want, you click that on, click one on, and then it automatically, from here, fills everything in, and then you hit "create," and now you've just created a permit. you've just created a permit. That's how easy it is. Now, everything's there, so now, all you do is just fill in all the information, like project name, or that kind of stuff. But you've created the permit application. Another thing I wanted to show you real briefly, because I'm going to be running out of time, is our electronic plan review. So our electronic plan review, and I don't think I was able to show you that last time. This is Culver's Restaurant. And so, if we go to submittals, and we click on the construction plans, so this is a list of all of the uploads that we have. So basically, we click on the construction plans, and then up comes the construction plan. So this is our electronic plan review. And through in our electronic plan review, we have all the tools available. So on the right-hand, the left-hand side, you can see the thumbnails for all of the different pages that are here. There's like 62 pages here, and it's all based on a thumbnail. We can do measure here, we can measure distance, we can measure area, we can highlight information, we can add comments, and all of this stuff then goes back to the customer, excuse me, goes back to the customer, and then they get this information, they make their changes, upload the plans back into the portal, and then, all the things are there, we issue the permit. We're actually issuing, and Saida's going to kill me for this, but the reason why our numbers are going down is we're actually issuing single-family dwellings in under two hours, and master plans in two days, and commercial in about six days. So by able to use this product. And don't quote me on that, because not each one's exactly the same, right? Depends on what information we get in as well. But it's really a cool tool, and we're starting to use it more and more each day as staff gets familiar with it. So it's pretty cool. Are there any questions on electronic plan review?
Robert, I have a question that goes back a little bit, not so much on electronic plan review, but rather, you know, we've talked about this as kind of the sky's the limit right now. We're still building it, we're still finding uses for it, we're still dealing with incorporation. But one of the things that I was just curious on is, how much as we continue to enter this data? And the frame I'm thinking of here was the one with all the little hash marks that talked about where every business was located. And one of the things that our MPO or MAG is doing is they're building massive amounts of data that can be utilized by many people. And right now, because we're still new to MAG, and there are a lot of things that we are kind of behind the times in here in Penalt County versus in Maricopa County, that they don't have that information yet. And so, they're working with us on doing that. And so, are we starting to find that we're working closely with MAG to upload this information, or allow them access to this information as we upload it, so that they can quickly access it and plug it in to their demographics, and then their businesses, and all the things that they're doing, so that it reaches beyond just, you know, our core group here, and kind of spreads across the greater Phoenix area, and to anybody that visits that site and happens to use those tools?
One reason why I negotiated the unlimited view on the users, so that way, we could bring in outside agencies, like the county health department, the air quality, ADOT, BEQ, all of these different outside agencies that we deal with, right? So that way, they can see what we're doing, and then they can give us information back. We're talking with Global Water and ED3 to get their layers. As a matter of fact, tomorrow at 2:00, we're giving this demonstration to MAG. So we're going to be talking with them as far as sharing availability. Kerry and his staff are working on setting up a server for us, so we can get some GIS information. Because right now, what we have to do with our information is, we have to build it, and then we have to send it to SmartGov for them to load it. Now, if we have our own server, which we're working on, then we'll be able to at least build some stuff in here, or pull stuff in, and then we'll be able to publish that, so they can just go pull it off of there and put it on here. So we're working towards that goal as best we can. But yes, to answer your question, yes, we're working towards that goal, and hopefully, a year from now, we'll be able to come back and say, ooh, look what we can do now.
Awesome.
Yeah. That's the goal, is to constantly move forward and utilize the program to its fullest extent.
Absolutely.
So, Saida, if you go back to the permitting, real quick.
Councilmember Wade, do you have a question?
Sorry. Well, I was just going to go back into permitting to show you that all of the departments that we have in here right now, if you go up to departments, we have building, code enforcement, engineering, code enforcement, engineering, finance, fire prevention, planning, zoning, public works. So we're going to, any other part of the organization that we can help out to get into the system that maybe can help benefit it, we're going to be doing that as well. So for code enforcement, it's working out really well. This program has the capability of automatically issuing notice and orders, and notice of violations, and stuff, so we're working to build that as well, so it can be more automated, and work with our HOAs and stuff. And I think we're giving a presentation to the HOAs in September, September, you know, to get them more familiar with the online code enforcement and stuff as well.
That's great. Councilmember Wade.
Yeah, I was just actually just curious as to how much the system costs to operate it, and how is it based, what's that based on? Is it with the cost per parcel, or number of users? And then finally, if it's a licensing situation, how far out does our licensed carriers?
Well, we sent out an RFP, and in that RFP, I asked for all of this. And I asked for all of this for under $50,000, which, of course, nobody could do, right? Most of them came in, and I won't mention any names, at $300,000, $400,000, $500,000. This program cost us $52,000. It's a per-user, and it's about between $1,200 to $1,300 per year per user, depends on whether you're using the electronic plan review or not. But like I said, part of that deal is negotiated as unlimited view only. So if you just want to get in and view stuff, we have unlimited, I keep doing that, we have unlimited users for that. And we have that, that's a guaranteed price for two years, so it's for '16, '17, and for '17, '18, that we're paying $31,000 this year. And as a matter of fact, you'll be approving that coming up, hopefully, thank you. And then, it'll be $31,000 next year as well. And then, after that, then we'll figure out how many users we have and go from there. But it's a pretty good deal, because it should be costing us about $75,000 a year.
Council, other questions? Martin.
I just wanted to add a couple of other things. So Robert has really been championing this thing from the very beginning. So Robert's been doing an outstanding job, I mean, getting it out there, and we've been, I say we, he and Saida really have been presenting this to other communities, they're coming here to see how this is working. We're kind of becoming poster child for how this can work well. And Saida, who is kind of the man behind the curtain tonight, is really, she's the person who's doing all the technical work, she's administering the whole thing. So between the two of them, they've made a great team, and they've been doing an excellent job. And one of the things I want to point out is that I think it was last week, we have these shelves that are behind the main counter that hold those big rolls of paper. We got rid of those because we don't use them anymore. So that's really kind of a crowning achievement for us, and so, it's been great. So, yeah, we're just looking to, you know, onward and upward, and seeing what else we can use this for successfully.
Saida, do you want to step out for a second, please? Yeah, so those bins we actually sent to the, this is why the Arizona Building Officials wanted us to present, because we sent in their newsletter, does anybody want these plan bins? Because we are totally digital, and we no longer need them anymore. Saida Flores. So we'll come back periodically, give updates to the council. Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you, Martin and Robert, we really appreciate it, we love what you're doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Well, thank you, that takes us to item 3.4, we're going to hear a presentation regarding the Veterans Affairs Committee. City Manager Rose.
I think they're taking just a couple of seconds to get the presentation loaded. But during that time period, I wanted to talk with you about the potential of creating a Veteran Affairs Committee. One of the things that we had discussed, this probably dates back even to the retreat, was there's so much information that we don't know about the state of affairs of our veterans here in Maricopa. So the first step would be establishing what is the clear mission for a potential Veteran Affairs Committee? Is that loaded? Voila. Thank you. Let's go to the next page. What we're proposing is that the mission for the committee be to primarily provide counsel to veterans and their dependents on benefits that are provided to them at the federal level, state level, and at the local level. Assist them with the preparation of any documents that are needed for that. And also, we have a number of events that I think we could also benefit from supporting those events, whether they be the VFW, the Legion, or Blue Star Moms. As many of you know, Councilmember Kimball has really taken on the effort of creating an annual event that's really, I think, more defined as a stand-down, where they provide veterans and their dependents with information on benefits. So as a part of the guiding principles that we're proposing, it would be to sustain that annual activity, but also to coordinate events, activities that demonstrate support for veterans and active military personnel. Also provide a forum for former members of the military community to express their views directly to a local government. So you would have the option of veterans coming to you, or to the Veteran Affairs Committee if it's created, to really drill down on the issues such as, is there an issue with suicides for veterans in Maricopa? Is there an issue with homelessness for veterans in Maricopa? And not only if there's an issue, if it is, then what are we going to do? What actions should we be taking to try and correct that situation? One of the most important things, I believe, that's being proposed is an annual state of affairs report to the mayor and council on what's going on with veterans here in our city. Currently, again, there's so much that we don't know. I think it's just well worth at least having a better understanding of the many issues that impact our veterans here in Maricopa. As it relates to staffing, that was one of the major concerns, and I think Arnold has done just an outstanding job with our age-friendly committee. And so, as we begin to get this Veteran Affairs Committee up and operating, I would propose having him retaining it in the city manager's office and assigning it to Arnold on at least an interim basis. Long-term, I think it's a community service that we provide. And so, the more appropriate department is going to be Community Services headed by Christie Reister. And that's not to say that Christie would be the liaison to it, but it would long-term be operating out of her department. But that's probably at least a year or two years away. I think it will take that long in order to get it up and function properly. So that is what I'm proposing. I wanted to hear your thoughts and give direction on whether you, on the feasibility of creating this type of committee.
Council, questions, thoughts, concerns, feedback you'd like to give at this time regarding this potential committee? Yes, Councilmember Wade.
I just want to compliment my fellow councilmember for taking on this effort when he first came on board and continuing with the effort as well. As a veteran myself, and one that fortunately, at this time, doesn't necessarily need some of the services that veterans, maybe some of the older veterans need, or some that have been injured in duty, or what have you, it's great to know that there's an organization within our city that's there to provide for us. I think that it goes without saying, the efforts that the veterans have put out there for our country, and I think if we can do anything to make life a little simpler and easier for them, I'm all for that, and I stand behind any effort to develop this committee.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Kimball.
Thank you, Councilmember Wade, and thank you, Mayor. I obviously stand behind this. Gregory and I have had extensive conversations in our monthly meetings about potentially bringing this forward to the council as a whole, to create a committee. In speaking with, you know, leaders in the veteran community, not necessarily leaders, but active members, like part of the VFW and the American Legion and whatnot, what they all tend to say is, if we could just get everybody in a room together, and be on the same page, and get stuff done, as a whole for veterans, I think that would be the best. And just, I think this committee is a really good opportunity for us to be able to form the committee, and then put people on the committee that will all ultimately work together to provide the best quality services that we can for veterans, coming from the voices of the veterans. They'll have an avenue, as the city manager had said, to go to this committee and voice their opinions on what we don't necessarily know that they want or need. So obviously, I stand behind it wholeheartedly, and I think it's a really good idea, and I appreciate the city manager for bringing it forward to us.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Smith.
Hi, Gregory. I love the idea too, and I do appreciate Councilmember Bridger bringing this forward to us. So I'm kind of curious in terms of the development of the group, how it will formulate, and how many members do we, I'm a little concerned of, sometimes committees can get way out of control, and how do we keep it focused in the right direction, that type of thing? So how does the process work regarding that development?
As far as the actual creation of it, if council gives direction at this point that you would like to create it, it will come to a regular agenda for your creation. As it relates to the size, it would be a seven-member committee, the same as all others, and each councilmember would get one appointment.
Okay.
What I would recommend as a part of the creation, similar to what we did with the age-friendly, was the creation of clear guiding principles that were, you know, drafted and presented tonight, as well as a clear mission for the committee as well. And I believe that will help in ensuring that it is achieving what the mayor and council is desiring.
All right, that sounds great, thank you.
So I'd like to follow on, Vice Mayor, did you have, go ahead, go ahead.
I'd like to congratulate you, first of all, for thinking about assembling such a committee. As someone who previously worked with Vietnam veterans, homeless Vietnam veterans, those who have been in combat will come back with some very serious problems. And of course, the local ones that we know seem to be very stable. But I think that committee will have to be very cautious of those needs once these youngsters come back from Iraq into our community. So I would just caution, I know that two colleagues are probably cognizant of that, but it's extremely important, a host of needs people need and have to accompany their problems.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor Brown, one of the things I think is an advantage of having this type of committee is trying to get ahead of those type of issues, to look out into the future and say, these are the type of services that we believe individuals that have served our country in a combat environment will need. Right now, we don't have that, and we don't have anyone that's really looking at that from a more global perspective. And so, that could easily be one of the principles, if you believe that's important, to include as one of the guiding principles for the creation of it.
I just wanted to follow on all of these comments, in the fact that, you know, it does go without saying that clearly, those that have sacrificed everything and, you know, for us deserve everything that we can give. But I guess I wanted to add just a simplistic word of caution in the respect that, you know, you said it earlier on, and I guess I just wanted council and the public to hear it a little bit more. You talked about the similarity to the age-friendly committee, and there-
And there might be a lot of people in the audience who don't know what the age-friendly committee is and what it does, but when you talk about that, that's a very broad term. And same with this Veterans Committee, it's a very broad term and there are very large problems that are instituted based on the enormous amount of needs and possibilities under the sun that goes with every different veteran from every different, you know, branch of the service. And those are beyond the scope of this small city to fix all of those problems. So I think that we need to make sure that, you know, that we make clear that the purpose is not to fix all the problems per se, but it doesn't mean that we don't attempt and try to do what we can. And I think that, you know, you were saying it best, Councilmember Kimball, when you said, you know, everybody wants to get in a room. And I think too often, we end up being fractured because we talk about different avenues, but maybe this group doesn't talk to that group or whatever the case might be. But if we can get in a room, you know, I see this as a round table to lay out the problems on the table that are affecting our veterans locally, and then with that, say, what can we do? How do we think outside the box? How do we look to sponsors? How do we look for resources that we can bring to bear, which may not be as great as the group thinks that we have? You know, and so I think that that communication that is opened is immensely wonderful from a data collecting perspective, right? We collect that data and know what we don't know now. But at the same time, I want to just be clear and to caution that, again, the purpose of this committee, if I'm not mistaken here, is not to solve every ale and fix every problem when we simply, you know, we can't print money and we can't tax unlimitedly and, you know, we're not the federal government here. So, you know, with that, with that, I just wanted to extend that word of caution, but I'm wholeheartedly in support of the idea and what it can generate. Because by doing something is certainly better than doing nothing. And I certainly think this is a worthy cause.
Mayor, you're absolutely right. As you know, I have a very good sense of our financial picture for the city and what we can afford. I think in part, it's the creation or identifying what the priorities should be, what are the needs that exist out there, what are the priorities, what are the resources that exist out there? And perhaps it's not even devoting more resources to it, perhaps it's directing them to the right resources.
Right.
So I believe that that's a part of, one of the advantages of the age-friendly group committee is that they created this strategic plan, so they created those priorities. I would see that happening for the Veterans Affairs Committee as well, as soon as we have a better handle on what those needs are.
Perfect. Yes, Councilmember Wade.
And just to add to your comments, Mr. Mayor, I would suggest that most veterans would not even come forward and tell you that they have an issue. They would deal with it and just be dealing with it. I think, though, that if they know that there is an organization that is going to provide them at least with a voice, then they're going to want to be able to take that opportunity to say what they need because they know that the voice is there. Because I guarantee you, there's probably not one veteran in this place that will walk up to you and tell you that I want you to do something for me. But knowing that the Veterans Committee is there just gives me comfort to know that this city supports me in the efforts that I've put out as a veteran.
Absolutely. Councilman Chappadus.
Thanks, Gregory, for the information, and I would echo my fellow council members in supporting this, but I do have a couple of concerns. One of the things that we learned being on the age-friendly committee, and both Councilmember Smith and I are the liaisons to that, is that the needs spread across a wide gamut of topics. And it doesn't just affect one generation, hence the name "age-friendly." I think the one thing that I would like to see, and maybe to echo some of the mayor's cautionary words, is I don't really see this being a committee of veterans, rather, a committee for veterans. I'd like to see representation from across the community, including people that are in their support networks. If it's about resources, that's one thing that we learned very early on with the age-friendly committee, is that just the awareness of what's available, much less how to get to it and how to take advantage of it, was a challenge for some people. I also see some crossovers between what we're doing with age-friendly and veterans. A lot of our seniors are veterans. So I can see that there needs to be some kind of synergy between those two groups at some point. It makes sense to me that Mr. Jackson would be the staff liaison in the short term because I think he's very well-rounded in terms of his exposure and his networks of support. So based on questions that Councilmember Smith asked, this is going to be coming to us to modify the code to include this as a standing committee, correct?
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Chappadus, that's correct.
Okay.
If that's the direction that I'm receiving from the mayor and council.
Okay. The other thing, and again, thanks to Councilmember Kimball for starting the Veterans event, but age-friendly has also embarked on an age-friendly senior info expo. I think it's a great thing for our city, but I want to make sure that we're consciously not trying to compete with one another, because I heard sponsors, I heard space, I heard events, I heard a lot of things. I think this is an opportunity for us to work synergistically and together in collaboration to do even bigger and better things for those demographics that we're underserving. And just, the first thing is being aware of what's available to your city. I think it's also an excellent opportunity to work with economic development and with this body to say, these are the needs, we all know the needs, but now we'll have data to back up, here's why it's important that you be in our city, that you have brick and mortar, that you rent a space in our hair a couple of days a week. I think all of that ties into our vision, our strategic plan, and us going forward. So I too would support this.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Chappadus, in addition to what you've said, I think we have an opportunity to leverage what we're doing in our police department. As you know, Chief Stahl has had a real focus to ensuring that we are engaged with the veteran community and that we are sensitive to their needs. And so I see this as a enhancement of what they're doing.
Councilmember Kimball.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had one more thing that I wanted to mention, what Councilwoman Chappadus had said, her first statement in regards, it's not a committee of veterans but for veterans. That was what Gregory and I had talked about in bringing this forward, was it's not made up of all veterans, right? It's a committee that discusses veterans' affairs in the city of Maricopa and everything else that we talked about. I don't want to prolong this, I know we're running out of time. So I just wanted to echo what she had said.
Well, and I think that's something else, I mean, as long as we're still in a work session, you know, discussing possibilities, one of the things I think you'd like to see proposed when it comes back to us is, you know, for us to decide and start thinking about now, is understanding that, you know, we talked about this being seven members, and I agree with Councilmember Smith, that, you know, a committee that's too large can get unwieldy. However, I think that it might, we might be underserving this particular community if we only limit it to seven, because as I see the different, you know, veterans groups that are the most prominent here, that might therein lie six or seven positions. That doesn't include then other members of the community. I think that if we had someone from the police force on that, you know, again, we talked just briefly momentarily about, you know, having that liaison, you know, having a veterans' person on the police force that understands veterans' concerns when PTSD is involved, those types of concerns. So I think that there, we have to be careful that we don't make it just because we need to keep it the same size as everything else, that we don't exclude a whole segment of the population that we're actually trying to serve. So I think if I promoted a counter proposal here, seven is obviously the one we start with, but I think that, you know, it could easily be stated that, you know, we would each pick two people and thus make it 14, just based on the fact that, you know, again, that allows us to bring in extra folks that are also looking to have a say, you know, maybe there's a civilian on there, maybe there's, you know, so it really gives a full, well-rounded ability for this committee to tackle some tough problems. So, Councilmember Smith and Councilwoman Chappadus.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I was just going to add on to that, there are different models to look at in terms of committee, right? Because I know at one point, Chamber had a member-at-large who gets some say, but possibly not voting privileges, but they have the opportunity to interact. So looking at different models that allows for that, I think would be a really great idea.
Absolutely. Councilwoman Chappadus.
To piggyback on that, I mean, I would agree that seven may be too limiting, but I'm also seeing that trend happening with the age-friendly committee, especially when you start bringing events involved. You actually, I can envision doing ad hoc or subcommittees out of this to focus on one segment, because putting on these events, as I'm sure everyone up here can attest to, it's a lot of details. And I don't think we're intentionally creating that expectation to pass on to staff at this point, but staff is going to be an integral part of that. So I think the buy-in that you get from your committee members, there's enough different diversity of tasks and different focuses throughout the year, and then working in partnership with age-friendly, like on the senior info expo type of thing, there's a number of ways that we can put those folks to work.
So any other questions or comments or concerns at this time? Thank you very much, Gregory. Appreciate it. Council, the time is 7:03. We know that typically, we would move right in, we'd close this session and move into the regular, but there is an item or two that we need to review in e-session prior to going to the regular session. So if we can have a very brief e-session and a motion to move to such, then we'll come back and start the regular session meeting.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We'll reconvene very shortly.